Board of School Commissioners meeting, today is December 8th. I'd like to call to order the meeting and all that would like to join may stand and for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to note that all commissioners are in attendance along with student rep Hannah Salamano and Isabella Lafemina will not be in attendance tonight, the other student representative. So next is the approval of the agenda. We have a couple additions. So everyone should have received the Chromebook purchase memo today. That was kind of time sensitive. So that will be added on to the regular consent agenda as F. And also, under old business, I would like to add information regarding the waiting study and also, or actually, I guess that would read new business, and under old business, superintendent review update. So, and just of note, in the consent agenda, it does contain the ratification of the RRA, I'm sorry, RAA contract, and that is what we will be having an executive session beforehand for. So if I could get a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Okay, thank you. Joanne, I think. Was it you, Joanne? And a second?
A just second.
Okay, thank you. Joanne and Ann, so all those in favor? Okay, and opposed? Okay, sorry, I didn't see everyone's hand go up. So since nobody is opposed and we will go with unanimously passes, so I would entertain a motion to go into executive session. I believe the clerk has the wording for that.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session to consider collective bargaining matters, the premature disclosure of which would place the Rutland City Public Schools at a disadvantage, and we would like to invite Ted, Rob, and Bill into executive session with us. Did I get everybody? Bill?
And Joanne, a second?
A second.
Okay, thank you, Charlene. So Joanne has sent a link to all board members and Patricia will keep this Zoom open for us to come back into. So we'll see you all in the other session. Thank you. I think we are all back. So thank you Patricia for holding down the fort. And just to mention, everyone, the screen might look a little different here. Rob and Patricia behind the scenes did some work for us so that there are other people that are viewing, or you know, the administrators, the administrative cabinet is as panelists and when they need to speak will be promoted, I'm sorry, they're participants and will be promoted to panelists. The advantage allows us to see the full board on one screen instead of trying to toggle back and forth, which was having some challenges. So thanks to Patricia and Rob for that. And so I think we are ready to, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. So I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Charlene. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dina. So since it's a consent agenda, no discussion. And so all those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? And any abstentions? Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you. Let's see. So as far as communications, we did not have anyone, any members of the pub, oh, sorry, Joanne?
Did we do the previous meeting's minutes yet?
Oh, yeah, no. Is it missing from our agenda? Oh, wait, it's in the minutes. It's in the consent agenda.
I apologize because I need to make a motion to change those minutes.
Okay, so I guess...
Look, I'd like, I guess I have to make a motion to un-move, get rid of the last thing, to reverse the consent agenda.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to reverse the approval of the consent agenda so that we can pull something out for discussion. So all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so passes unanimously. We're back to square one. So I would entertain a motion regarding the consent agenda.
So moved.
Joanne, do you want to make a motion to pull something out of the consent agenda?
Yeah, now I have to find it. I'm sorry.
Okay, so the minutes?
I want to pull the minutes out of the consent agenda.
Okay. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Dina, all those in favor of pulling the minutes out of the consent agenda? All right. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So the motion passes unanimously. So we will pull the minutes out of the consent agenda. And then we will now, I would like a motion to approve the consent agenda minus A, which is the minutes. So I would entertain a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Charlene. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Hurley. Okay, so all those in favor of the consent agenda minus the minutes? Okay, and any opposed? And any abstentions? Okay, so consent agenda without minutes passes unanimously. So then next up, we will take up the minutes. So Joanne?
I'm sorry, I'm looking, Betty sent me a note. I had it on my screen and I've lost it.
Oh, was, it was about the Stafford, some clarification on the date that we are ratifying the budget, which just happened today, not on the, was it noted as the ninth or something?
Noted as the 10th.
As the 10th, sorry. And there was something else Melissa wanted changed, right?
The other change was that there was only one program being eliminated. I'm looking for that. I'm sorry, guys.
Joanne, I have it if you want me to.
Could you tell me?
I think in the minutes it said that the Health Careers Program was being expanded. And that expansion is not, is not happening. It's just paused for the moment, status quo. So it should read that the Health Careers Program expansion is being paused, electrical and plumbing is being expanded next year.
Okay, great. So those will be the changes proposed to the minutes, is the date of the budget ratification and to remove the expansion of the healthcare program because that is not being expanded. And that was not stated in the meeting either. Okay. All right. So that is a motion. And do I have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Kevin. All those, any other discussion regarding it? Sorry? No? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, and any abstentions? Excellent. Okay, so motion passes unanimously. So now we are moving back to where we were at communications. We did not have anyone register from the public to address the board. So the next up on the agenda is a school and program update. So I will turn it over to Hannah to give us the student rep update.
Thank you. At RIS, we recently ended our first trimester and sent progress reports home. School pictures have arrived and went home with our in-person students. We will reschedule pickup times for remote learners or families can stop by the office. Thanks to our creative music department, 4th grade orchestra was able to put on a virtual concert for all to see. The 5th grade put on a virtual assembly to celebrate our last school-wide theme of empathy with the assistance of our technology specialist, Adam Brua. We look forward to celebrating gratitude this month. Teachers and support staff at Northwest and Northeast schools did an incredible job with our remote learning week as our educators hone their skills in distance learning strategies. The counseling team, the volunteer coordinator, teachers, and paras did extensive outreach to support students and families throughout the week. Northwest students recently enjoyed a great scavenger hunt as a part of the PBIS school-wide celebration. The scavenger hunt took place in the school's backyard, in the outdoor classroom, and on the walking path along East Creek behind the school. What a fun event for all. Northwest's monthly theme of gratitude and citizenship culminates with the annual Make It, Take It event next week, combined with a virtual hero assembly. Last week, Northeast's November monthly theme of leadership ended with awards and celebration for the students who amplify this trait. During the month of December, Northeast will focus on generosity and helpfulness. Students spend time learning about and sharing gifts from the heart. Rutland Middle School teachers have been working extremely hard to create units of study to help our students stay engaged in attending their classes. Rachel Mark, our consultant from the Terran Institute of Innovative Education, has been supporting us with this work. Our next school-wide unit is entitled Innovation and Change and will begin at the end of January. Coming to Rutland Middle School next week, Spirit Week starts on Monday, the 14th with Red and Green Day. Tuesday is Blue and White Day. Wednesday is Hat Day. Thursday is Twin Day and Friday's Ugly Sweater Day. At Rutland High School, the first meeting of the Mascot Advisory Committee was held last week. At that meeting, the group reviewed the school's vision statement as a statement of who we aspire to be, unpacked the board's motion in order to understand our charge, generated norms and expectations for our work, and reviewed the outline of the process moving forward. The honors band members have put together the Southwest Vermont Solo Festival as a virtual opportunity being offered not only to Rutland Band students but to all high school band students in Addison, Benson, Bennington, and Rutland Counties. This is being offered since the usual district music festival is not taking place, allowing students to work towards a performance goal and receive specialized feedback and ratings from a panel of professional judges from around the country. Friday, December 11th, is our first Governor's Day, which is set aside for teachers and staff to participate in a much-needed time for professional development. There is no school for any students on that day. Enjoy your long weekend, Rutland City Public School students. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Hannah. Any questions for Hannah? What's going on in the schools? Thank you. Had to cover it all yourself. Lots of information. So next up on our agenda is a central office report. So I will turn it over to Superintendent Olson.
Okay, Allison, I would like to congratulate right here on screen our own Patricia Eigner. She was awarded the Frank Watson Award from VitaLearn. That's Vermont's information technology professional educators organization. And the Frank Watson Award is given each year to the person whose many years of devoted service, vision, and leadership have significantly advanced Vermont educational technology at the local and regional and state level. So Patricia participated in her presentation. I have one quote from that I'd like to read. Describes her well. When they presented her, presented her award, they said, "You can always count on Patricia to be on the cutting edge of conversations about technology in our state, starting with some of the earliest statewide ed tech initiatives in Vermont, such as the statewide data consortium, to serving on the VitaLearn board for six years, including as president. She is the first woman to hold that position. She rolls up her sleeves and she is a doer and she has a bias toward action." So, back to me personally, ending my quote there, I can say that for as long as I've been an administrator at Rutland Schools, Patricia's been our Director of Technology and she really has led and transformed our district in how we instruct. And last spring, Patricia and her colleagues were the heroes as they turned, helped us turn to remote learning in such a short amount of time. So I want to congratulate and thank Patricia for her leadership and innovation in service of our entire Rutland Schools community.
I'm doing a loud one.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Patricia. I heard some more good news. I didn't know if Hannah was going to mention this. I heard that Brady Geisler at Rutland High School was the Rutland Herald Runner of the Year in cross-country and that Billy Latkin was the Rutland Herald's Golfer of the Year. So it was neat to see. And you did, did you, Hannah, you didn't mention the Presidential Scholars, I don't think. Did I miss that?
No, I didn't.
Okay. So two Rutland High School students, one of them who was also a Stafford student, were named Vermont Presidential Scholars. The Vermont Presidential Scholars Program recognizes students for academic success, artistic and technical excellence, community service, and leadership. So the Rutland High School representative was Giovanni Falco of RHS. He's one of 20 students statewide to be named, they call it the general category. And then there's a category for career in tech ed, and there are only five students that reach that level, and that is Alicia Caputo from Stafford Tech and Rutland High. So congratulations to both of them. That's a great honor. Dina, do we have a loud clap there? Hannah, you mentioned that we do not have class in the district on December 11th, Friday. Thank you for doing that. That's a professional development day for our staff and they're working on planning purposes for, in light of COVID-19. You call it the Governor's Day. I like that, like that name. I want to update the board on the progress of our search for the irreplaceable Michael Derivionik as Director of Buildings and Grounds. Rob has led that effort over the last few weeks with a team of colleagues and with board members Hurley Kovakis and Aaron Schimpf. And that team has second interviews tomorrow, I believe, and they should be wrapping up the process. So we hope to have a final recommendation to the board shortly thereafter. I would like to thank the entire community, the whole school community, because we worked through some challenges posed by the coronavirus, especially over the last four weeks. Everyone involved in the process at RCPS and also in the Vermont Department of Health has been wonderful in their commitment to making sure that we keep our schools healthy and our kids learning. So thank you to everyone. It's been a challenge, but we, I think we've made it through pretty successfully. But we still have more challenges to come, I'm sure. So we just respectfully asked everyone to keep the health guidance in the forefront of all our minds. We want to make sure we're vigilant about our practices over the next few months. And last, this is a message from Sherry Bizarro to the board. She just wants to make sure that with committee meetings, if you, you notice those meetings are in the back of the agenda, if there's any changes you want to make over time, just let her know and she'll be glad to make those changes. So we can keep everybody informed. So that is that. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Bill. Any questions for Bill? Brittany?
I just wanted to add, you were taking note of people, summer students out of the intermediate school went for Thanksgiving and collected all this food to help out the families of, within her, her school area. And so I just want a big shout out to everybody who put that together and helped her get gift cards and everything else. So I think as a, as a school between the coronavirus and making sure everybody was for Thanksgiving, that was awesome.
Thank you, Brittany. That's great.
Thank you. Any other board members? Okay, so next up on the agenda is the Stafford Technical Center budget ratification. So I will turn it over to Melissa and Ted.
Hi. So at the last meeting, we presented our budget, which included the FY22 budget, which has a 0% increase over the FY21 for our tuition rate, along with our gear grant and our Perkins Plan. And so we are just looking for those to be approved this evening.
Okay, great. Anything to add on, Ted?
No, thank you.
Okay. So I guess at this point, I would entertain a motion to ratify the Stafford Technical Center's budget for the upcoming year.
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Joanne. And do I have a second?
A second.
Brittany, thank you. Any discussion, any questions regarding the budget? I know we went over it in detail last time. We appreciate that, Melissa. Okay, seeing none. All those, oh, sorry, Ann?
I, thank you. I wasn't here last week at the meeting, but I did want to say, and I know that you passed along a message for me, Allison, but Melissa, it was a great job. I appreciated sitting in on the process. And you presented a lot of options and this one is the best option, I think, with, you know, what's best for our kids. And I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ann. And Ann, just for the public, she's our representative on the Stafford Board. And so, and seeing no questions, all those in favor of ratifying the Stafford Technical Center budget? Thank you. And any opposed? And any abstentions? Okay. So seeing that the budget passes unanimously. So thank you again, Melissa and Ted, for all your work on that and Ann, your work with the committee as well. So that brings us...
Allison, connect.
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt. Melissa, you have two more motions you need to have put through.
Yes. Yes, there were motions in the board packet, one for the Fair and one for the Perkins.
Okay. Sorry, they didn't make it on the agenda, but I forgot about them. Let's see. So, so motion one is move to accept the FY21 gear grant in support of equipment purchases at Stafford Technical Center in the amount of $3,74,721.65. So if I would entertain a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Charlene. And a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Hurley. So any questions regarding the gear grant? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. I bumped my mute button. And then, now there's...
The motion three.
Total of three motions? Okay. So I don't know if anyone else has the paper and would like to make the motion or if I should just continue reading them and asking someone to move it.
Okay.
We move to accept the federal Carl D. Perkins Grant for fiscal year '22 for use in support of the operation of Stafford Technical Center with an anticipated award amount of $336,591.
And is there a second? Thank you, Joanne. Any question? Any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously. And then there's motion number two on that sheet, too, if someone would like to make the motion or I can read it as well.
Isn't that, we voted on?
Yeah, that was the first motion.
Okay, so that's, that's just the budget ratification?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. All right. Thank you, everyone. Sorry about that, Melissa. Keep me on your toes.
No worries.
All right. So now that brings us to the budget discussion for FY22 for Rutland City Public Schools. So I will turn that over to Ted.
Thank you very much, Allison. Thank you, everyone. Rob, if I could ask for your assistance once again to share the charts? Thank you. So I'm going to spend some time this evening just giving you an overview of our anticipated fiscal '22 budget. This is a work in progress. We are still waiting for some input from the state on factors that will further affect the budget, but I think we have a good amount of time built in for further review and ultimately, hopefully, an approval in, at the January board meeting. Overall, I'd just like to make the points that are on this first page. We are projecting that the district's total expenses will decline by $1 million next year to $57.8 million. We'll look at some of those factors in a moment, but they include efficiencies and lower costs for special education programs next year, which more than offset some higher costs for salaries, medical benefits, and some COVID-related changes. Revenues are also projected to decline mainly in the local source area. Most special COVID-related funding is expected to be applied to this year's expenses. We're anticipating an average cost per pupil for the district next year, which would be funded by the state, of about $16,900. That would be an increase of about 6.5% from '21 budget to this year. That would still be below the Vermont average, projected at $17,600, which is increasing about 3 and 3/4 to 4%. And as I mentioned, allowable tuitions and a number of other factors will determine the final budget that we'll present to you, and that information is expected either later this month or in January. Rob, if we could turn to the next chart? This gives us a high-level recap of what's going on with expenses and the anticipated reduction of $1 million year to year. We do incur increased salary and benefits costs. On average, medical benefits are expected to increase about 10% this year after a 12% increase last year. But we are anticipating fewer employees, which will partially offset that, as well as some additional efficiencies to come. I've just noted there in the first bullet point that as of September, the district had 502 full-time employees versus an anticipated budget of 518 that was anticipated almost a year ago. Our special education expenditures are also expected to go down this coming year because of a mix of changing student needs, as well as some services that were brought in-house due to the programming and planning of the administration, providing those services at lower cost than previously contracted through third parties. And as mentioned, we have gone around to each school in the district and of course, considered administrative teams as well to look for any efficiencies to save taxpayer money while still achieving educational mission, both short-term and long-term. Rob, if we could go on to the revenue slide? Thank you, sir. So our revenues unfortunately also are projected to decline by about $3 million in '22 from $26.5 million in this year's budget. We're anticipating the tuition revenue and the enrollment from other towns will stay about flat. Our other local is the main source of the anticipated decline. Local revenue included a drawdown of some working capital surplus in the fiscal '21 budget. We're anticipating a further modest drawdown in fiscal '22, but that difference is about $3 million year to year. This working capital surplus basically represents taxpayer funds that the district is returning to the taxpayers by virtue of this working capital drawdown. Most federal grant funding is expected to be relatively unchanged. We'll be working that in further detail in the coming weeks. There are one or two grants that could be ending this year, one in particular that we know of. And there is special funding coming into the district. The gear funding that Melissa talked about for Stafford, as well as two programs, ESER and Coronavirus Relief, those funds are expected to be largely applied to fiscal '21 expenses, but as the year progresses, we'll get a better feel for that. So in the next chart, what I'd like to do is to show you how that nets out how that nets out for the district. So at the current time, and again, these numbers are very likely to change between now and mid-January, but hopefully, they will stay in this range. I've mentioned expenses are anticipated next year at almost $58 million, $57.8. The revenue from federal and local sources at about $23.5 million, which leaves a difference of a bit more than $34 million. And that difference is what the state of Vermont will make up from the state educational fund. Typically, when we talk about the cost per pupil, it is this difference, this $34 million, that we're using as the basis for that calculation, as you'll see as we progress further down the chart. The state has advised us that in spite of potential disruptions in enrollment count caused by the Coronavirus relief, for example, some students being homeschooled and the like, that if a district's enrollment declines, that they will be held at no less than the number of pupils in fiscal '21, which for us was at 2,025. So we're using that number as a placeholder for now to be refined as time goes on, if we get further input. So looking at the $34,300,000 divided by the number of equalized pupil, which suggests that in fiscal '22, the district's average cost per pupil would be $16.9,000, which would be about 96% of what the state is anticipating at $17,600. As you know, the district has typically been below the state average, and we are maintaining at being below the state average spending. Our, our cost per pupil is going up a little bit faster than the state of Vermont because of the patterns that I've mentioned above. You know, it is interesting, because a couple of people have asked, well, gee, if your total expenses are going down, how can your cost per pupil go up? And the reason is because it's cost per pupil to the state of Vermont after the funding that's been provided from outside federal, as well as local sources. Now, to that point, I'd like to go to the next slide and mention something that you may have heard about in the past. Some people, including one of my predecessors, Peter Ammons, have referred to the 25 cents on the dollar rule of thumb. And where that comes from, just to be sure you know, is that about 25% of school district expenses are funded by local taxpayers. Well, what does that mean? I'm going to use some actual data from 2020, just to give you, just to illustrate the principle, and it doesn't change much year to year. So in 2020, about $13 million were, were paid by Rutland City taxpayers in taxes toward the educational mission and educational fund, including homestead, commercial, and non-homestead. And I've shown the breakdown here. Just under $5 million from the district homestead taxes, and about $8 million from commercial and non-homestead taxes. Now, the total budget that year was almost $55 million. And so the 25 cents on the dollar rule comes from the fact that taxpayers in Rutland City paid 13 out of 55 million, or about 25%, which means, of course, that the district receives an average of 75 cents from the, from the state and federal sources for each dollar of expense. Why is that important? Well, what that says is, the city is a net beneficiary of educational funding inflow. That definitely contributes to the local economy and generates a significant multiplier effect. Just for your interest, the Federal Reserve of the United States estimates that that multiplier effect can range anywhere between $1 and $2.5, meaning that for each initial dollar that is spent in an economy, that, when it is spent and generates the demand locally for other services, to the extent it's spent locally, generates an additional income for other people in the community of anywhere from an extra dollar to $2.5. It's a very significant effect. The flip side of that is to think about the fact that for every dollar that you reduce district expense, the top line, that will reduce total taxes paid by 25 cents. Again, because the district is a net beneficiary of funding inflows. People have asked about the waiting study that was done at the University of Vermont, and where that stands in consideration at the, at the state level. And I was in a webinar this week, yesterday, with a member of the Agency of Education. And while he doesn't know whether the waiting study might be taken up in the current legislative session, given how busy the calendar is, he does expect that there's a lot of interest in it and push to progress it. So his, his informed guess was that that could be looked at potentially within the next two years, and then could have an impact shortly thereafter on a number of districts. And as you might know, that waiting study takes a look at a number of factors that characterize the Rutland City Public Schools and demographics, and could benefit the district with additional income if it is, if it is implemented in some fashion close to what has been proposed. So that's not on the immediate horizon, but it's something for us to definitely keep our eyes on and to participate in if we can help. So with that, I'd like to, you know, conclude the overview and open up for any questions or comments. And I appreciate your time and attention.
Thank you, Ted. Joanne?
Ted, thanks a lot for that. One thing I'd also like to point out is that our tax rate that gets set, the only, we have a very small influence on what that is. So the non-residential people, the non, you know, the businesses of the city of Rutland, that tax rate is a statewide setting. Doesn't matter what we spend, that gets set. So really, if you look at what our spending influences, it's actually less than 10% of the budget is paid for by the city. And we have a fiduciary responsibility to all of Vermont to spend wisely and to reduce costs as much as possible. But I just don't want people to think, you know, if we reduce the budget a lot, that we're going to save the taxpayers a lot. Because unfortunately, it, you know, it works with increases, but it also works with decreases. So that, that the, the commercial rate, or the non-residential rate, is a statewide rate. And so that's just an issue for us as we go through our decision-making. Does that make sense to you, Ted?
Absolutely. Thank you for that. Yeah, and basically, when Joanne mentions 10 cents on the dollar, she's alluding to something from one of the last charts, which showed you that $4.9 million of the 13 was paid by, by that local district homestead tax that is a function of our spending only. And that 4.9 divided by the 55 million gives you approximately the 10% she was referring to. And I think that's, I think that's a very important point. I didn't get into it on the chart, but that's exactly right. Thank you, Joanne.
Thank you, Joanne. Any other board members? And I'm, oh, okay, now I can see everyone again. Brittany?
I just have a question. When does that tax rate get set again? I'm sorry, I.
Yes, well.
I can imagine.
Depends. I mean, it's really interesting, because a couple of things go on. In terms of the Rutland City Public Schools tax rate, the typical schedule is that the board would approve a budget proposal in January, which would determine what the budget dollars are. At that point, if, and I stress if, the state has provided all of the factors that are necessary to go from the expense budget minus the revenues to a calculation of estimated tax rates, one of those key factors being the CLA, the Common Level of Appraisal Adjustment, that Joanne mentioned, then that allows a more accurate estimation of what the likely Rutland City tax rate will be. Along those lines, Brittany, just to give you sort of an order of magnitude, so last week, I got a question from one or two board members asking, gee, what do you think the tax rate might look like? It's probably a little premature. I gave the best guess I had at the time. But then over the weekend, I took a look at just playing with the CLA to see how a variation in that one factor that the state provides can affect the tax rate. And what I looked at was the fact that in recent years, the CLA has ranged between 95 and 99%. And just a swing of a few percentage points can change our city district's tax rate by 5 cents or more. So the AOE contacts that I have listened to in some webinars have indicated that, well, while that's supposed to be provided in December, it's not likely to be available until January. So realistically, between that and some other factors, I don't think it will be possible to come up with a reasonable estimate of the district's homestead tax rate until sometime in January. I hope that answers your question.
Nope, that's, that's perfect. Thank you, Ted.
Thank you.
The city actually sets the tax rate months later, correct?
Well, let me answer that in two steps. First, when the district gets to the point where it believes it can estimate the tax rate. So last year, for our district, it was $1,5102. That was forwarded to the state after the school board approved it. The state did whatever it does, and then it finally returned to us an actual tax rate with some state modification that was slightly different. So honestly, Allison, I'm not sure when that district homestead rate got returned to us. But then that is provided to the city, which takes that. And then the, the Board of Aldermen, of course, set some of the other rates that you're familiar with. And the district tax rate gets combined with, like, the municipal, and, and they come up with the data that you see on the, on the city's website. I don't know for sure, in, in secondary answer to your question, the state-set education rate that Joanne was alluding to, I'm not certain when that's actually finalized. So, but I'll try and find out and let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rob?
Just for clarity, that was a good question about when the tax rate gets set. And the, the state actually sets our education tax rate in the end. We approve the budget in the city, in the, you know, in the school district. We do the budget, and the state sets the education tax rate. And as Ted explained, what the city sets is the combination of those two costs. The state gives them that education rate, and then they set the municipal rate, and it comes to us as taxpayers at home in a combined rate.
Yeah, for anybody who's really interested in, in some of those details, I would highly recommend going to the website that the city treasurer has. Mary Markowski and her team have a, have a page on their website, which outlines the different tax rates and the components. And that makes it actually really clear. But as, as I mentioned, last year, the recommended budget approved by the school board tax rate came back from the state of Vermont slightly different, but they do some changes. So, and I, I'll have to learn more about what they do when they return it back to us.
Thank you. Any other board members have questions? Okay, excellent.
Questions, I appreciate it.
Okay, and Ted has been great and available. If anyone has questions, to certainly reach out for him for a deeper dive or understanding, as these kind of are, half of them are made-up numbers and moving targets, and, and really fun, I'm sure.
There you go. Snapshot at any given time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Okay, so the next thing on our agenda, then, is committee reports. So we have a policy committee report. So I will turn it over to Matt, as he chairs a policy committee.
Hi, how are you?
Excellent.
Yep, so we met on November 24th. The work we've been doing is cyclical review to try to get all policies within a window of three years, having been reviewed. We worked on the 1300 series and the 1400 series under bylaws. And we tabled one policy, the 1345 on board conduct, just so we can see how the board operating protocols might fit in with that existing policy, which doesn't look like they've been necessarily meshed together. So that will be on the agenda for next time we meet, which won't be till the end of January. So what we're looking for is an approval of a first reading for the policies that we did review at the November 24th meeting.
Okay, would you like to make a motion, Matt?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to accept first reading of the listed policies on the agenda. It would be for first reading.
Okay, and is there a second?
I'll second that.
Kathy, thank you. Any discussion? Again, these are for first reading. So anyone with any concerns and could reach out at any time, because they won't go through until our next meeting for the second reading. But any questions for Matt or the policy team?
I had just a brief comment, maybe?
Sure, Charlene.
I don't have it with me. It's, it's the first one, I think. Or wait a minute. It's the one that has the organizations?
Yep, that's the first one.
Everybody, it's got everybody's role. Students were the last.
That's actually what we just approved on the second reading, the organization one?
Oh, okay, then forget it.
Okay. All right, any other board members? No? Okay. If there was something on that, Charlene, too, I'm sure you could discuss it with Matt if any changes need to be made.
Yeah, and I.
At the committee level, come back, yeah.
Yeah, I'm thinking it might not be that one, but I can come back to it, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, so the motion on the floor is to accept for first reading the policies in 1300 and 1410, as outlined on the agenda. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and any opposed? Okay, seeing none, motion carries unanimously. Anything else, Matt, in terms of the, oh, sorry?
Oh, I was gonna say, that's all. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Matt. So the next committee that has met is staff relations. So I don't know, I know we ratified one contract. Turn it over to Deana to see if she has anything to add tonight.
Not much more than what we've discussed. We're meeting, we met our first meeting with FSMI representation last Thursday. We started the process with them, scheduled three additional meetings with them coming up the next few weeks and into January. We're meeting next week, back-to-back, next, this, sorry, this Thursday, back-to-back with REA and REA ESP. Yes, to start, start the, the process and, and schedule the following meetings. So that's, that's pretty much what I can discuss right now.
Okay.
A lot of meetings, a lot of meetings, a lot of quality time together.
Absolutely, yes. Thank you to the Staff Relations Committee members and the administration. It's a rough year. So, and then the only other committee that met was Finance, which we didn't have on the agenda, because obviously, they were discussing the budget as presented. So next up on the agenda is Old and New Business. And as I mentioned earlier, we have, I wanted to add waiting study on to it, and Ted talked about that a little bit with the budget presentation. And a group spearheaded by South, not South Burlington, Burlington School District, has put together kind of a work group to look at the waiting study and to see what schools want to engage in trying to follow through with it. It came out last December, I believe. So nothing has been done at the state level with it. And so the group is trying to, you know, kind of be a working group to identify what needs there are, what, how people want to be involved. And all the board members received an email from, from the group that was starting it up, and Bill. Bill, Ted, myself, and Kathy attended the first informational meeting. And so we are just coming back to the board, just to discuss it a little bit and be sure that the board is aware and in agreement that it is something we pursue because the results of this study, if implemented, would be very beneficial, uh, to our district. And Bill's nodding his head. He might be able to speak a little bit more. I haven't looked at it thoroughly, but I believe it would, things that we don't have now, um, in the waiting study would be some of the economic base challenges and that, that that could benefit us on, in the waiting study is the weight in the terms of how the state calculates that, um, equalized pupil. So, um, I guess I'll turn it over if, if Bill maybe could add or Ted a little bit to that. And so we're just trying to judge the board's interest in participating in this group and, uh, moving forward.
I, I would just add, I think, I think we mentioned the last, last meeting too, you know, the, the calculation for how you, how you value or come up with a student, um, is, would be shifted a little bit and more weight would be added to, um, socioeconomic influences and, and, um, English language learners, member of high school students you have in a district, member of middle school students you have in a district. And so, uh, what the waiting study has, has calculated based on, um, budget numbers from two, three years ago and two years ago, it would show that Rutland City would be a, uh, a big recipient of, of, of that change. It would be, it'd be very good for the city. And, uh, so there's other communities in the state that as well that would be, um, would be benefiting from this. And when we talk about, um, you know, when, when we talk about our, our budget being kind of in below state average, we still have a lot of needs that we, we do try to meet with our, with our students and it, it, this, a lot goes into trying to make sure we support all the kids in our district. So the, the goal of the waiting study really is to, for districts with high needs to try to make sure that they, they are funded equitably enough to help those, help those families and help those kids. That's, that's the target. So, um, I, I would suggest that we do get involved with this group and just see, see where we could benefit from it, from it as a, as a school district. I don't know if Ted has anything more to add.
No, I, I would agree completely, man. Nothing additional. Thank you for asking.
And Kathy, I know you participated as well. Anything to add or? Oh, you're on mute.
Um, I just feel we should keep pursuing it. Um, it, it seemed like it, the, the waiting formula hasn't been revisited in 30 years. And so it's definitely time. And it would benefit us seemingly a lot. So.
Okay, great. Thank you, everyone. So, um, I guess we probably should formalize it and, oh, sorry, Matt?
All right. I just wondered, is, is the group looking for like a team from different school boards, like a, some kind of committee group or that larger statewide group?
Yes. So they, um, the Burlington, uh, members of their school board sent out emails to like almost every school district and school board teams in order to get the most involvement that they could. They're trying to identify because some people are like, oh, this one's not involved, that one's not. They were going back through their emails to make sure they had contacted everyone. Which is kind of also another reason why we have to be involved because the waiting study also would be disinvade, disadvantageous to towns on the other side of the spectrum. So, you know, that they are looking for involvement in that as well. And I had actually pulled up, so it was, I can't remember how many people were on it, but they did invite all the boards and all the board members. So like the agenda for a meeting coming up on the 17th is, um, to review feedbacks from the school boards because everyone was going to go back to their local board to decide on interest. Review the participants, you know, to make sure that people are at the table that need to be at the table. Refine and clarify the goal of this coalition team because like I said, some people joined the meeting that might not be as, seeing it as a benefit and wanting the full study to be applied. Do we want that to be applied? Do we want them to target pieces of it? Or what? And to strategize on the next steps is, is the agenda for, um, the meeting coming up next week. So does that answer your question, Matt?
Well, while I had gotten, I've been getting the emails, uh, I guess what I was asking is if you're intending to like try to form a team from our board that would attend? Or if you want individual people to all attend as many as can?
So the, um, South Burlington, uh, this Burlington School Board formed this coalition. And from our board, it was Kathy, myself, Bill and Ted that expressed interest. Others could join if they wanted to. So I'm just looking overall, we have representation and to be sure that it is something that the board wants to pursue. And certainly if anyone was interested in joining, it more than welcome. Erin?
When you say the board wants to pursue, I guess I'm confused as, this seems to me like a legislative, you know, process, looking at waiting and looking at different districts to collect data, correct? But you're saying that's already been done. So are they coming back in to do research? I'm confused as to how we participate.
Yeah, sorry. So it is regarding the implementation or lack of implementation of the waiting study. The waiting study is done.
By whom?
It's there. UVM did the waiting study for the state and delivered it to the state last December.
Uh, I understand all of that, but my question is, what is the goal now? Like, are they saying we're not implementing it, implementing it correctly? Or is it like a, we're trying to change the way the state is, correct?
We're trying to make the state move on, well, if that's what the board wishes, to make the state move on the recommended changes in the waiting study.
I guess I'm confused as to how this board is particularly involved. So you three members have decided to pursue this with administration, to be in the conversation. But this is a universal state goal, correct?
No, it's not a universal state goal because we don't know what they're going to do with the waiting study.
So you're giving them data? And we want Rutland to present the data that we have gathered?
No. So they have the data.
Yeah.
They have the data and the state has not done anything with the data. So we are simply stating our point of view as Rutland City Public School District that the changes proposed in the waiting study would be beneficial to us. And we would like to have that message brought forth to hopefully make changes at the state level.
So that is it? We are just supporting this weighted study factor?
Exactly.
Thank you. That makes it much simpler to understand how we participate and, and what we're buying into. Thank you.
Certainly. Any other questions? No? Okay. Um, so I guess we should just formalize it and I would, um, entertain a motion to have, um, you know, representation from Rutland City Public Schools involved in the, they're calling it a waiting study coalition, um, with other school districts within the state. Erin?
I would like, if the members of this board are participating, then I'd like monthly updates, if the meetings are monthly, to this board on that. I don't want it to be like some ancillary involvement that we don't, you know, be abreast of it on because I think it's important to understand the balance of local to state and, and how we do achieve things.
Yep, absolutely. Joanne?
I'm, I'm just curious. I thought everyone was getting these emails about this study. I get them.
Yeah.
They send them to every single board member. And I know that, uh, this was something that David Wach brought up a while back. So, um, and I think they actually send out their minutes after their meeting. So I think, I understand what you're saying, Erin. If we're being involved, they should report back. So, uh, but.
Correct. And, and I get the.
Know about this study.
I get the emails. I see it. I guess this is my first time hearing we have involvement or have had involvement in the past. So that's news to me. And I think that, you know, again, if, if we can rally together as school districts and, and help, you know, bring insight to the people making decisions and funding, that's really important. But I do want to make sure that it's clear and transparent and that, you know, the goals are beneficial to the district and its people.
And that's, that's why, you know, we're bringing it up tonight as an action item for the involvement. Because it was brought up, um, you know, just an email to every, blasted to every board member. And it was the first informational meeting. So, um, all the respective board members in terms of, of getting approval to, to continue working with the group. Is that, if that makes sense? Brittany?
Um, Allison, I just, I, my, my personal email was hacked, but I have not gotten emails. And I've gotten some late notices. So I don't know if there's a way to be put back on to a list or just to double check. I haven't personally received emails lately.
Sure. Yeah. So there, um, is it the, still the same email address you're using, Brittany?
Yeah, I stayed, yeah, it's the same address. I just lost a whole ton of stuff.
A whole bunch. Okay, sure. I'll make sure to get you added back on.
Thank you.
Certainly. Any other questions? Kevin?
Um, I'm not aware that I was getting these emails. Who would this have been coming from?
Um, from a member of the South Burlington, uh, Burlington School Board.
Oh, okay. Does that person have a name or, I mean, how would I recognize it?
Uh, they have Burlington School District addresses. There was, I believe, two different people that were, one sent invite and one sent, um, other stuff. But I don't know if they sent the minutes to everyone if people didn't express an interest. I'm not sure. I just know that the invitation did go to our full board. Anne?
I just forwarded to you, Kevin, the minutes and Brittany, so that you can have the person's name. It's Kendra, I think.
Okay.
Matt?
Um, and I will tell you, I, I, I did get minutes. And I don't, I had seen the early email and I had not like responded with interest to it necessarily. So I think they are sending it to anybody that's on the list, even if you
Great.
Didn't sign up.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I would like to entertain a motion to have, um, representation from this, from the district, join the weighted study coalition.
So moved.
Thank you, Kathy. And second?
Second.
Not sure who had the second there. I feel like I heard Hurley's voice. And so I'm, okay, thanks.
My camera died, so.
That's fine. I'm like, I swear that was Hurley's voice, but Kevin's hand. I don't know what's going on. Um, okay. So all those, all those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, thank you. The motion carries. Um, so then, let's see, that's the waiting study. So the other thing that we added on to the agenda was, um, the superintendent review process. And so I will turn that over to Joanne.
So, um, we received the, uh, superintendent's self-evaluation. And we will forward that to the full board. And then we will have a process similar to the process that we had with Adam. It's very much the same as the process we had with Adam. And so you'll, you should receive that in the next week or two. I have to meet with Matt after the meeting. Um, and we'll just be looking for everybody's input and we'll talk more about the process in the next meeting. I just wanted to let you know that this is on our horizon to, uh, complete. Uh, he was to provide us with his, uh, self-assessment by the beginning of this month, and he has done so. And, uh, so that's where we are with that.
Okay, great. Any questions for Joanne?
When you say, Joanna, it's very similar. I mean, there are changes then to the way that we handled it last time or?
No, um, there's just a few corrections to, there was some mistyping or what do you call it? On both. And so there's some, but I, I think it's important that we have the same, we, we, consistently.
Okay. And we're, we're just going to go over those corrections next time?
Yes.
Or at some point in the future?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Charlene. Any other questions? Okay. Um, so any other old or new business to come before the board? Okay. Um, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
Thank you, Kevin. A second?
Second.